Gavel to gavel.
I'd like to call the end of the meeting to Oira, 7:38. Everyone please rise. Do you think you can plug in your weepies?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic, the Constitution, and one nation.
At this time, I'd like to give the superintendent of schools the oath of office. My phone won't work. I want to give it to you first, ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry.
So she can officially give it back to you?
Yes.
You do this every year. This is annual.
Please raise your hand, your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Mary Adomchek, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of district clerk according to the best of my ability. the best of my ability. And the Constitution of the United States. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of board trustee.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to nominate a candidate for the president of the Board of Education. Do you have a nomination? Do I have a second?
I nominate Diana Kohoff.
No, this is a second for nomination.
I'm sorry. You know, I made the same mistake last year, better than this.
I need a second for the nomination of Teresa Sander. Do we have any other nominations?
I'll second that. Good nomination. Second.
Okay. I'd like to give the duties of the office as president.
Eventually, Susan, you get to that side of the table. Just don't get too far over there.
Do you have that beginning issue?
I gave that to you. It's a Williams. So now I open it up for motions for vice president, correct? Um, motions for vice president?
Can I make this tie?
Okay. I'll make Tommy John.
That's last year.
Do you have the way?
Ask if there are any other.
Are there any other nominations for vice president? Thank you for coaching me. Will you continue to coach me, please?
She charges.
So there, um, now we need to vote.
Okay. So those in favor of Chris Pikes for vice president?
Please raise your.
Can I get a motion to elect Tommy John for vice president? Can I get a motion to elect Tommy John for vice president?
John will.
And then actually, Sandy, Sandy's the most senior. You switch with Susan unless you don't want to.
We're teasing. We're just lighting it up.
Okay. This time, I'd like to administer the oath of office. Tommy, Thomas, come up. Please raise your.
On the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I faithfully discharge the duties of board vice president.
That is not his shade, I'm sure.
Yes.
All right. Superintendent's report, correct?
No.
Nope.
No, who doesn't have one? Everybody. Mary, you want one?
I seem to be having difficulties with my projector up there tonight. Can I get a volunteer? Can I get a volunteer for my administrator to literally hit the button on the PowerPoint? Because we're going to start with Mr. Nichols. Yeah, my little.
Turned on?
No, it's turned on, but it's not. We were, we were having some problems before.
Scott's behind you. He's got it.
Oh, he's got it. Thank you, Scott. Thank you. I appreciate it. We're going to start with Principal Nichols, if you wouldn't mind. This should be a very brief overview because we're not in the school year at this time. So we'll move rather briefly through our principals and updates.
Good evening, everybody. End of the year. The big events were the eighth grade moving up, which was June 22. Ms. Mieridis was responsible for organizing that, and the event was, I thought, a success. The seniors were recognized at morning program on the 23rd, which was hopefully a new tradition. Basically, we had a graduation rehearsal that morning, scheduled for 9:30, I believe. And we had the seniors show up and took them down to the morning program at 8:45. Is that what it was? And Mr. Malone worked with the senior class advisor, Ms. Marionfeld, to make that happen. And that was a nice event. And then finally, on June 25th, at 5:00 PM, the seniors graduated on the hill at Pearson. Maria Baum was the commencement speaker, and the weather cooperated unlike previous year, so that event went well as, as well.
Yeah, we're all fabulous.
Yeah.
Just fabulous.
Couple of pictures here. Upper right is high school. Left, I believe, is the morning program. Middle school, lower left, some students who were involved in moving up, and I believe high school graduation on the lower right. Most of the events this summer center around activities organized by Mr. Solo through the Ruhr Shan Trust. So what you're seeing here is one of the events that is happening this week, actually. A photography exhibit, once again facilitated by the Ruhr Shan Trust. And all of these events that run through the summer are, again, through the Ruhr Shan Trust, except for the August 23rd middle school summer orientation, which Ms. Mieridis is spearheading. So really, the summertime for us is about staffing and budget and those types of things. So thankfully, we do have the Ruhr Shan Trust to run things that will benefit our students. For those of you who don't know, the students who do go to summer school, we participate in the Eastern Suffolk Boses Regional Summer School, which is centered in Hampton Bays. So we do have students in grades seven through 12 attending that program, which began this week.
And there's no bus service, is there?
Correct, because it falls outside of our previous. Good evening, everyone.
The last week of the school year at the elementary school was full of a lot of fun and festive days for the boys and girls and the staff. At the beginning of the week, our pre-K classes shared a moving up ceremony with their families. We had a ceremony in the morning and then for the afternoon session at 1:00. It was actually great. The staff here helped to set up the Coral Room, and that served as a great venue, air-conditioned venue, for, for the pre-K ceremony. And the boys and girls made their way up to kindergarten. They'll be joining us in September. Our phys ed teachers do a great job getting ready for the end of the year, and they put on some wonderful events for the boys and girls, real highlights of, of the year for many. Field day 4K through 2 was on the 21st, and then the following day was field day 4, 3 through 5. And the boys and girls participate in, I guess, what we all remember as the traditional field day events, like the relay races and potato sack race. We even have held on to a modified tug-of-war. So that's a lot of fun. But there's also a lot of other activities, like dancing and crafts. So all the boys and girls really have a good chance to participate and have a good time. And then on Thursday of that week, we took everyone down to Long Beach for the traditional beach day. Weather cooperated. It was just a great, great morning. Thanks to Coach Bramhoff, we had some, some hot dogs served, and all the boys and girls had a chance to swim in front of lifeguards, as well as just play on the beach and enjoy the surroundings of Long Beach. And then the last day was Friday, the 24th. We had a nice morning, morning program and a great way to kind of send off to the fifth graders who are coming over to Pearson. And then everybody got on the bus and headed home for, for summer break. Today was the start of our summer school, a small program serving about 35 students. Ms. Beckmans and Ms. Denon and myself helped organize that, and we have a, we have a great staff in place. The boys and girls will really get a lot out of this six-week program. It concludes on August 12th. So at the meeting in August, I'll have some, some updates on how that went. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. And just in time for Mr. Bramhoff. I got it looking now. Thanks. Mr. Fisher took care of me.
Good evening, everybody. We have a list of the summer major milestone dates for the athletics department. On July 25th, we will be opening the window for our family ID registration for fall sports. Essentially, this is an online tool or an online service that will be helping our athletes with communicating with the families, making sure that they have all the proper paperwork so they can participate in athletics. August 5th and August 12th, we'll have our second round of summer sports physicals. The dates are tentative, as well as the times. An email and a, the website will be updated to reflect the exact times of those dates. August 15th is the first day of JV and varsity football, which will be played at Southampton this year for the first time. August 22nd is the first day of JV and varsity's fall sports for all the other sports other than football. I believe September 7th is the first day of school. It'll also be the first day of athletics for the middle school sports teams. And we've already selected the date of October 7th and 8th as our homecoming weekend. Buildings and grounds, obviously, we can see that there's a substantial amount of construction going on throughout the district, and I, Mike will come up and he'll, and he'll speak to that a little bit more thoroughly. I've been meeting with Mike as frequently as possible, often daily, to discuss what's going on and things, he'll, he'll update you on exactly how things are going. Greg Stanley's crew from the donation that we received from the Bridge Golf Course, they've been out there several days with the machines, and what they've been doing is irrigating, excuse me, aerating and overseeding the grass. What they've been doing essentially is all the areas that you see grass currently, they're trying to make us grow some really great grass for the fall. So.
Excuse me. In terms of that, does the field have to be unused for that to take, or can it be used during the summer while that's happening?
I'll, I'll meet with Greg. I think he thinks he'll, I'll meet with Greg to answer that question. All right? I'm not exactly sure about what the expectations of Greg's program is at this moment, so for the most part, we've, we've been trying to limit the use of the field. So I don't know exactly how long we need to allow it to grow.
Okay.
And for Mike, Mike will come up and speak to the, to the District Wyebond Project. Let's go.
Some of the oldest stuff here. Start right off with the auditorium. If anybody took a look in there, the final grade has been met now that the concrete pour is done. This was the, the pour that also needed an additional six inches of, of concrete. That was the change order that was approved for $9,225.91, but that now is, is at grade, and it's moving along. We have about a one week cure time until we allow the other contractors to come in there and start doing their, our work that's above. So probably, I believe, that one week will be up tomorrow. So from that point on, they could start working again in that area, because it'll be enough cured. The next would be the courtyard. That was laying dormant, as everybody knows, for a little while, once we got some of the direction as far as the footing is concerned and so forth. Now, as you can see, the rebar is in there. That was inspected today and approved. Tomorrow, we'll get the concrete pour for that area and start moving. You'll start seeing more action in that area and moving much quicker. But the, the revised footing plan was implemented along with all the rebar that was there. That likewise was an approved change order for $20,000 that now we moved forward with. Just, I'm not trying to go through the, the numbers until I get checks that say this has been paid or whatever it is. Those numbers won't change, so, but they should shortly. This is our technology area. The demo is complete. As you can see in the bottom right-hand corner, that the walls are starting to go up. They're progressing fairly well, and we're likewise piping in for our electricals, so that we seem to have no problem with. We do have one issue which is being resolved, and that is it's the, the rerouting of some drain line that was at an existing sink. The proposal should be in, and I'll update the board as far as, and the administration as far as what that dollar amount will be. The cafeteria demo has started, as you can see. That's progressing well, and so far, there's no, no major, or not even minor issues with regards to the cafeteria. We were fortunate enough to be able to, though, on the opposite side, get a credit for work that we, I shouldn't say we, that the administration, Jennifer was, Ms. Beschamie was down there, and said that the ceiling tiles really didn't need to be changed. She felt that that was something that we could forego. So I was able to get a $14,300 credit for that scope of work. And if the district chooses to do that down the road, it would basically be just material and whatever the custodial staff, you know, they could do on their own. So it's a substantial savings for the district.
Mike, do you know why it was initially proposed to swap them out?
It was more of a, from what I was told, a soundproofing. So they, they felt that it would be a better soundproofing with the proposed ceiling, the new ceiling tiles that were there.
That's what I thought, and, and so I, I do think that we should have a conversation about whether that's a worthwhile investment or not, because over the years, we've gotten feedback.
I believe there were other ideas implemented on the walls that were also.
So you basically have half it done. So I think one, I think Jennifer made the right decision there. Once we close on the side, then we. So if we need to move it forward, then the upstairs just swap them out. It's not a big deal. I think Denon changed my room. It's a very good condition.
I get it. So is the feeling, is the feeling that the soundproofing on the walls will accomplish most of what needs to get done?
Yes, we all get to use. Okay. Our district can do it with the employees we have. We can purchase that, and we can actually do that work ourselves, because the framing isn't going to change. It's just the type of tiles will change. And, you know, when we looked to Eric and his team, they were like, we can do that after, after.
And save the labor cost.
After we pressure test it.
Correct. You're talking prevailing wage versus.
Absolutely. No, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
No problem. So that's with regards, some more demo in the cafeteria. Now, as far as the, the middle school wing with the mechanical upgrades, that has already started. The demo in that area has, has started. Control wiring has been going in, and along with that, the side note where we were talking about the $6,400 change order, that was for a mechanical unit that would be in the server room, an upgrade to that. So I just wanted to encompass that in there, because there's no server room project. It's kind of encompassed in the mechanical upgrade, so. But that portion is, is moving, moving along. We'll just, you know, see how the mechanical contractor progresses. Little difficulties with him right now, but, you know, hopefully that, that changes. The site work, I had the kickoff meeting with the site work contractor, and that went well. We're going to meet tomorrow at another meeting to discuss schedule, and when I received the schedule from the contractor, I'm hoping tomorrow that he has that schedule. that schedule. I will share that with the administration and the board at that time. But right now, he's on board and supposedly supplying the schedule to both projects. Later on, I'll have the site work slide for the elementary school also. With regards to the addition over at the elementary school, it's progressing fairly well. We have no major issues. As you can see, the first slide was the, the concrete block wall and then next to it is that, there's no concrete block wall. It's gone now. We've got the red brick right in front of it now, so it's, it's moving along fairly rapidly. The, the steel is in and we're looking to hopefully get the decking for that addition sometime towards the end of the week. So that, that will enclose that area and once again, it's moving along fairly well. This is the one that's got a little hitch to it. This is the vestibule area at the elementary school. During excavation, it was discovered, two, two dry wells were discovered, in unforeseen condition. Unfortunately, they're, they're there. We have to move them, because it's in the footprint of the vestibule.
How, how old are those? Predates all the plans we have?
Yeah. The, the gentleman that was there, I guess he was a facility director and a while back, and he remembers when it was a Catholic school and so forth. He didn't even know they were there.
So this is, this dates back before any plans we could have referenced?
Yes, so...
So they were not working.
We, that, I couldn't answer right now. We're, we're looking into the fact that it's from a roof drain that may still be active. But once it's, you know, once it gets below, you don't know where it, where that leads to. And unfortunately, it's, it's there and they have to be moved. So I have the, the contractor preparing a, a proposal for me and hopefully that will be in. The architect sent out a revision, what he wanted done, and on Friday. And today and tomorrow, the contractor's going to be preparing and working with his subcontractors to come up with a price.
But I think, Mike, we can tell folks, because when we see great big holes like that, as Matt Malone, Matt Malone was in a meeting with me this morning going, Katie, said, Matt, breathe. And you can reassure that even though we're seeing these big holes, that this, in a scale of building project, we're not, we're not worried.
This is, you know, maybe for the...
We might get work, but right now, just we're not...
To me, it doesn't really unnerve me, because these things happen in the course of construction. And fortunately, we will be able to move this even well before the material for the vestibule comes in. So we shouldn't have any issue, you know, with, with that concerning, you know, the dry wells that, that they're there.
Did you hear that, Mr. Malone?
Maybe if we keep digging, we'll find some buried treasure. There will be some happy ending in there.
We still do, though, have the, the issue of the, the bulletproof glass, the lead time for that. So that will accommodate, make sure that that's open force, you know, the beginning of school. But that is just a very long lead time on, on that class. And there's no, they won't even accept an additional upcharge to expedite it. So even if we wanted to pay more money, they're not willing to do it, so.
Do you think we're at risk of having...
Yes.
Are we at risk of having this available before the school year begins?
Even if it's not, that is not available, we will make it so that the front entry is fully usable. We're not taking down those two existing doors, entering into that area, so that it's fully functional. It's, you know, you're pretty much going to have the shell there. This is worst-case scenario and, you know, we'll just have to...
Swap it out when you get it.
Correct.
Got it.
I'm sorry, can I just ask a question about the dry well? Did you say that you thought they were in use?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just curious. I mean, obviously, they need to plan for the water in that location, because it's down low. Just for where the water goes, you know, when it rains and things.
It, it, there's two wells there. One seems to be a well that, that contains the water and then an overflow well, which just leaches into the ground. So that, when that one well fills up, it goes into that, the other one, leaching into the, into your...
They would be replaced with equivalent capacity.
Correct. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I just wanted to know what the plan is for the drought of water.
Oh, yes. We're just going to move them, move them over. Hopefully, what we're trying to do is save those two wells. So we're going to excavate and relocate those two wells.
That's, yeah, that's why I don't want that.
Misunderstood your, your...
I wasn't there for what you were doing.
I would fill them up with dirt. Put a couple plants.
And even if the, the rings do get damaged, they're, they're not very expensive. I believe each ring is like $300. It's really not a major amount of money, but we're trying to save, you know, the rings, you know, for an additional savings, if at all possible. So. The mechanical upgrades in the gym area, I'm hoping for a delivery date from the mechanical contractor tomorrow. I have a construction meeting tomorrow. Again, he's, hasn't been forthcoming with some of the information I need, but that's what is projected, is that tomorrow I will have some dates as to when these items will be delivered and hopefully starting the, the installation of those units. The windows over at the elementary school, the contractor has been on-site. He's been taking measurements for all the openings and will probably shortly be sending those measurements out to, it's Marvin Windows. And they will then give him, I guess, a delivery date as to when that happens. I will let the, the administration and the board know the dates that are given once Marvin works that out with the general contractor for the windows. And lastly, is the site work, as I brought out before. He, the kickoff meeting happened and hopefully tomorrow, he can give me a schedule as to when the, the demo. He has been on-site to do some of his markouts. That markouts are any electrical lines that are underground, anything that's underground that may be disturbed. He is, the mockout firm has been out and that's been done. But his schedule, I hope, hopefully, we'll see that tomorrow. And I believe that is...
Mike, I just wanted to go back to the auditorium that we, you are working to try and expedite the seats, the seating. But if, but if that doesn't happen, you're going to alert the board and more alert the community that...
Correct. The seating with, with that, the firm, JSBQ, I believe it is, they have stated that there is probably going to be a delay in that they're so far behind with the manufacture of those, of those seats. So as soon as I find out, the individual who's, who's going to tell me this date is on, on vacation right now, and I've been trying to find out from someone else, and that's her account, and she unfortunately is the only one that knows what's going on there. But hopefully, as soon as she gets back, I will be able to update the administration.
Mike's trying to expedite the chairs, if that's possible. If it's not, then we will change that date and we'll alert. It looks like we can still be on schedule to have our, our play. And I've spoken with the folks that, as well as Jeff has, they, they, they were aware and they were like, we can do our practices for the high school play in classrooms, in other alternative spaces. They just want to know they can do their production on the stage, so.
And I'm sorry, what's the schedule of the, the play you're referring to?
The high school play for the fall.
So, so you're anticipating that this could be a significant delay?
We're looking at October now.
Possibility of October.
So, so I, thank you for letting us know now, even before, you know, you've been able to hear back from them about the, the timing. Are they now, is this a, a longer production time than has been communicated to us up in...
It, it, it could vary when it comes to, to seating, according to how many schools or theaters or whatever it is. So when we start a project out, they could say it's an eight-week lead time. And then as time goes on, it goes to 12 or 16 weeks, whatever the case may be. So that, exact numbers in flux until we actually make the order. And she has the order in and I have to find out exactly what that date is. And like I said, I've called a number of times, but she's the only one that could give me the...
But isn't that because of the upholstery change?
Nope.
It isn't the upholstery change.
Right. Well, that's why I'm asking, because we pressure tested this and said, and asked, will this delay, if we wait till the following week to look at more upholstery, would it delay the actual installation of the seats? We were told, no, no, no. So that's why I'm, I'm so surprised now, after this was ready so many times. So all of a sudden, it's the first time we're hearing that, instead of it being a certain amount of time, there could be a wide range and we're not really sure until we get, until we place our order. We hadn't heard that before in many conversations we've had about the seats.
Before she, she left for vacation, I tried to get a hard date and she says that she cannot give me a hard date. There is a possibility, though, that you may not get them on time. And I says, well, what are we talking? And she says, well, there's a possibility that it might be sometime in October. So I says, well, I need, I need to know exactly when, you know, so that I could relay that. And she says, okay, I'll get you that information. She went on vacation and never got me the information after, you know, so.
Right.
I, I just wanted to be honest and say, that is a possibility.
Just the first that we're hearing that, or that maybe you even knew that it was elastic and that it wasn't a specific time.
Correct. Correct. So, and that's why, when I, when I heard that, I wanted something more specific to give the board, if it's October 5th, you know, I, I want the board to know that that's the scheduled delivery date. And then yet a few more days for installation.
Right now, right now, it's on time until we've spoken to her, because Mike might be able to expedite the chair orders. But we wanted to make sure that we're completely transparent, because when he placed the order was the first he heard that it... So, you know, you never know in construction projects what's going to be the bottleneck. And right now, it happens to be chairs, so.
Does it make sense to reach out to Bay Street now to see if the dates of the play they're available? Because until...
Sorry, I don't remember the order. Is it high school play first or middle school?
In November. High school play. And then middle school is in the winter.
Musical.
They're in November, right?
So high school, middle school, high school.
Correct.
And the play's in November.
Right, right. Which that's why they're, they're ready to do their, yeah, they're ready to do their practices.
But the musical is, is in spring.
Not middle school and then...
So the first, the first time we need that for our performing arts is November.
November.
It's November.
Thank you. Can I get your... Thanks, Mike.
Okay. So we have a few things going on this summer. The security project is, is pretty close to done. We've got some minor adjustments, I hope, over at the elementary school, and then we'll be good to go. So at this point, we've held off on the training of the, the final stages of training until August. At that point, we should be ready with everything in place and we should be able to go live at the start of the school year with all the panic buttons and the door alerts and all the different things that are part of the system. So everything is moving forward there. Just a little bit of a hangup that slowed us down a little bit, but we should be fine at this point for the start of the school year. In terms of summer projects, you know, as we did the budget presentations, I think you all can recall the, the items we said we're going to be working on this summer. We're going to be updating computers for the teachers. We're on a rotation of every three years, providing teachers with a new workstation. So what we do is each year, we, we order one-third of the number of teachers we have. We order one-third of the computers. So every three years, they end up with a new computer. In addition to that, we're ordering a few workstations and a, and a bunch of additional Chromebooks that will be shared throughout the, the building here at Pearson. Over at the elementary school, we're going to be updating the lab. Presently, they have the Apple mini-computers over there. They're about, I think, five or six, they have to be at least six years old, because they're, they've been here since before I got here, so.
I apologize.
Yeah. But they're still working fine, actually.
So are you, Scott?
Thank you.
Come on, you left that one wide open for me to go.
I did. So actually, what we're doing is we're taking the computers from one of the labs over here, we're bringing them over to the elementary school. They'll be set up up there. So we're actually not buying new computers for the elementary lab, the IMAX that are coming out of the East Lab here that's being put to different use next year will serve us well over at the elementary school. In addition to that, you know, we always have a lot of backend stuff that people, you don't get to see, but you certainly benefit from it. Backend switches, wireless controllers to improve, obviously, the wireless connectivity throughout the building. As we move forward, of course, there's more and more devices being, you know, added to our network on a regular basis. So we want to stay current with that. And actually, with this particular upgrade, what it will do for us is it will provide us with a redundancy that we, we don't have right now. So we'll actually have two wireless controllers, so in the event that one fails, we'll automatically have a backup. And when they're both up, they will load balance one another to keep things running even more smoothly. And then some of you may know already, just the other day, the new website went live. It's still very much a work in progress, so feel free to send me your comments or suggestions on things that need to be improved or things that might have been overlooked in the, in the process of migrating. But also, keep in mind, I will be working directly with the other district administrators to review the information now that it has been brought over, to make sure that it is current. And if there are things that are outdated, things that are missing from our perspective, we'll, we'll be sure to fix that up. But certainly, from your perspective, if you see anything. The one difference is, of course, some of you encountered this today, if you go to the, if you go to any of the links, students, staff, or actually just students and staff, there's one that says email that, so that's how you guys can get your emails as well. Did make a subtle change today, which I don't know if anybody would notice it or not, but I'll point it out. Since the menus we went with are parents, staff, and students, there'll be, you know, a drop-down menu of, this is not a, this is a static image from the other day. But there'll be menu choices, you know, related to whether you're a parent, student, or staff member. But we changed the top corner, there's quick links up in the very top corner of the page. So now, instead of saying faculty, it'll say staff, just so it matches with the rest of the site. And what that will do is it'll take you to the same place as if you clicked on four parents, four staff, four students. So it's just a faster way to get there. I wish it was a, a live site that I could show you around a little bit, but if you scroll down a little bit, you'll see that there are quick links for each site. As you change sites, as you go from the high school to the middle school to the elementary school to the district page, those quick links will change. So I tried to make the most commonly accessed features at each level a part of those quick links to make it faster and easier for people to find the information you want. And as we worked out last year, we do have one single common calendar for all of the sites, so that all the information will be contained on one site that we update throughout the year, so that it makes it easy. People don't have to get confused and keep track of multiple, multiple sites for calendars and so forth.
That's great. Was this, was this a part of the work of the communications committee?
Absolutely.
I want to thank, I want to thank all those volunteers on the communications committee for all of your time. I'm sorry, boss?
She said stand up.
I think they did a great job. And you, you look at this, it really reflects where we are, which is wonderful.
Fabulous. It was so refreshing to see, Scott. Thank you.
You're very welcome. But the, it is, I would like to know, thank you for, for reminding me, Chris, that it is a lot of suggestions that came out of the communications committee that ended up going into the final site. A lot of different tweaks, some subtle color changes that really bring things out. So it was definitely beneficial to have the opportunity to run that past them and work with those folks for the past year to get it to where we're at.
It was a lot of work on your part as well. Tremendous leadership on your part.
Yes, he did all the heavy lifting, really, Scott. Thank you.
He became the king of revisions when it was, you know, came to that. Great work. I have very, we're, we're beginning our school year, which will begin today with our reorganizational meeting, which is very heavy. I think we have 83 items for a reorganizational meeting. And I really want to commend so much of our district office for the amount of work that went into it, Jennifer and Mary, and all of our school administrators, our principals. It was just, and a special education, to start a school year and have summer school running and have it all pulled together today is, is not a simple task. And they did it in such a professional manner and working so carefully with the Board of Education. I want to thank the Board of Education for allowing me to leave. I was nominated back in March to be on the New York State School Superintendent Special Education Subcommittee to work with our New York State Commissioner and her team. There's only nine subcommittees that work with our New York State Commissioner and her team, which is a almost wholly new team. Everyone's left New York State Department of Education. She has a new, dynamic team that are really, for the first time, I always, the board has often heard me say how glacier-like our State of Education Department is. But I've always liked how glacier-like our State of Education Department has been over the last, you know, 100 years or so, because they move slowly and that's good for children, because... they move slowly. And that's good for children because conflict and controversy is not good for children. But we've had conflict and controversy handed to us through the difficult inflammation of the Common Core, through the overabundance of testing that hasn't been implemented again in a, in a careful manner for our children. And Dr. Leah, our new Commissioner of Education, is a very, very thoughtful person. And she has a fluidity to her and her new dynamic team that she really cares and she wants to make a difference. So I was really pleased that the Board let me step away from the district for Monday and Tuesday, Sunday, Monday and Tuesday of last week to go meet with her. And I was, again, I was nominated back in March and didn't find out that I actually was appointed to this as the co-chair of the Special Education Subcommittee until last week. They're like, oh, we didn't get to tell you? I was like, didn't tell me. So it's a great honor to be able to work that closely with our New York State Commissioner and to be able to voice in. I wanted to give the Board of Education and our community some of the things that our Commissioner's working on because we are going to have to be the voice on the east end, our, our district and our east end. So it's important that we're talking to folks. One of the items was computer-based assessments. And there are, like, for example, you'd get all the way out to the very east end schools, do they have the capacity? Like Sag Harbor has been built through the work of Mr. Fisher where we have the capacity, we have the bandwidth. But we also have concerns with our assessments truly representational of the assessments that children can take when they're working with pen and paper. So we were able to give her that feedback and will continue to give her that feedback. Middle school years and the expectation, we have a lot of mandated coursework that happens in middle school. Do we give children the opportunity to excel? And do we give them the opportunity to catch up? Student placement into higher education, do we give them the opportunity to take robust coursework, college coursework, IB, AP? And also, are we giving children all that they need to get into the SUNY, SUNY and community colleges and technical colleges? Because we're hearing about they're not prepared, they're not prepared. Are they being fairly assessed? And do, do we need to do more? The teacher pipeline, we're seeing shortages across the state in teachers and administrators. So our Commissioner's very interested in broadening that. If, if you have a level of expertise, she wants to hear from Boards of Education and from administrators on how we can broaden that pipeline. And finally, enhancing communication both ways with parents, principals, superintendents, and Boards of Education, which is a real welcome relief. I mean, if we lived through the last decade where they weren't listening, I think that a lot of the work that was done, especially here on Long Island, they heard. My mother used to say, if you can't listen, you have to, you'll have to feel. And I think through a lot of the opt-out and a lot of the parent noise that they sent up to the state and to our governor said, we need to listen now this time around. And so they want to improve and enhance communication. So those are all feedback that she'll be looking for. I only have to do three days away from the district and I already did two. And the next time I do it will be just an additional day at our conference. But it was really robust conversation. So I want to thank you so much for letting me go. And now, I know everybody's been anticipating the advent of.
Can I go back to the chairs?
We're back to the chairs?
Yeah, I got a question.
Is Mike still here?
Is Mike still here?
Mm-mm.
Okay. Jeb, here's a question. So we bid out for the chairs, right?
No.
We went back to the auditorium chairs.
We went to our chair and chairs.
We went with, with the company who specialized in chairs. And, yeah, they, they bought them a pay contract. The only other company that, they're only one of the companies that was making one, right?
So we're in auditoriums.
The other company.
Okay, we all know the next business.
I know Mike told me, now that we've placed the order, the, the most critical piece is
the, because we're a school district, is the fire retardant is being placed on. And that's what, that's what slows the process down.
Yeah, you can pick a basic fabric that is readily available. And there's actually a credit that's coming from the fabric.
Is that holding up the production of the seats? The treatment of the fabric? Are they unrelated, right?
There's only one company that this chair is going to get held up for. If there's only one company that makes chairs for auditoriums.
No. It's going to get them tested.
I'm saying, well, we're already going to be behind schedule. I still think we might want to put out the seat.
I think we're surprised because the chairs released the bad dollars.
Yeah. And we, we still don't, we still, we may be on schedule, but I just wanted to send up a warning flag that there was a concern.
And I'm saying, instead of, instead of being reactive, I would, I would sort of try to be proactive. And I cannot possibly give my one company that does these chairs in the country, have an order. But if they're, then they're not, they're not holding up, they don't do the call, they don't have their contract. So I'm just saying, it had to be our company. But I guess you guys would know.
Yeah, but it might be too late if the order was placed already and then the girl's on vacation. So we might not be able to pull the order back, even if we found so. I don't know.
I don't know either.
Oh, no, it's a good question. And, you know, it's difficult when you start into the bid process too, because you.
Well, the bid would have been on the, on the, for the, the most competitors. But if they can't get to a deadline, then you could go to the next bidder that would make a lot of it higher. And by the time you end up.
I, I will ask him. I will absolutely have him explore it.
Thank you.
Yes. Oh, we get to start the reorganizational meeting.
Oh, okay.
All those, yes.
Any reminders, goals?
Oh, yes, yes. We do have, just a reminder for everyone that we will be having our goals-setting meeting on July 18th at 6:30. If necessary, the goal-setting meeting for July 19th at six, if necessary, at 6:30. Board retreat on July 20th, which will be, that'll be being coordinated by our New York State School Board. And that'll be at 6:00 PM. That will be for our Board members.
Can we talk about the process for staying in those goals? We're obviously not going to walk in to the goal-setting meeting structure. So we need to talk about what the structure's going to be for that meeting.
We can do that right now if you want.
Yeah. So we don't, are we, I'm just trying to think, do we have, do we have another meeting before then or we would talk about it?
No, I don't think so.
I'm looking at the calendar. So we'd have to have, we'd have to have that conversation now.
The next time that we meet is at the goals meeting.
Right.
And I was thinking that it might be most efficient if we all just kind of spend some time between now and then thinking about maybe one or two things that we would like to, for the next year. And then we'll just have a roundtable discussion to see which of those things are feasible, we can prioritize, and then just.
And I've already sent the last three years of goals to all the Board members. I'll need to send it on to Susan so you can look and resonate on, you know, because sometimes you started something three years ago and you thought it was all tied up, but maybe not. So we're looking at the three years. And next Wednesday, I'll be working with our, our cabinet. So looking at just any what-ifs they want to bring to the table. Because sometimes when we're working in a group, there's something called, we think that the loudest, most aggressive, and we kind of go, I don't want to say anything. But, you know, sometimes the very quietest person in the room can sometimes have very thoughtful things to say. And, and this will give them an opportunity to maybe say them at the table with us. And then, you know, if they feel more comfortable, I can.
Thinking of maybe if everybody would just jot down, and I, we can do that the night of, if everybody has something written, one or two things that they've thought about ahead of time, and then we can all just, this is what I wrote, like, this is what I brought. That way, everybody gets a chance to speak, as opposed to if I just open it up and then. And had a chance to share their ideas.
A couple of thoughts. I, I have sat through some goal-setting meetings where the Board has received the goals from the administration ahead of time to reflect on. So I would hope that there's a context of maybe making goals, creating goals, that have some foundation in data potentially.
You're referring to measurable outcomes for the goals as opposed to collecting data?
Not, not necessarily. That's not what I was referring to.
Okay, data.
I'm.
Say data.
So for instance, as an example.
More specifics on data.
For example, if there is data that indicates that we have, we're fragile in a certain area, that might say we need to develop a program in that area. It doesn't necessarily mean that the program we have has data-driven goals attached to it. That's something separate. I do like goals that are, that are measurable, but not all goals are necessarily measurable with numbers. But what I'm talking about in terms of the formulation of goals, we do have metrics of data and performance within our district. And, and some of the best goal-setting that districts do are based on at least reflecting on that data to see. So I'm just, and I've been through some goal-setting sessions in the district where you had data to support a lot of that dialogue. And we just haven't done that in a while. And so I'm nervous about going into goal-setting without having the context of that.
Saying is that you want everybody to think about two or three things that they would want on their goals. Why don't you collect them in advance? And maybe that would then, you could be the macticated to talk to the cabinet. So things like Chris's requesting go in this direction.
I'm actually saying the opposite though. What I'm saying.
I, I know what you're saying, but without that feedback from you, then we might sit in a goals meeting for two days and none of that would be incorporated.
What I'm saying is, as a Board member, without reflecting on key data metrics, I may not be saying the things that are most meaningful. That, that's the point. And so we've done some goal-setting historically, but we've looked at it and said, what are key metrics when we measure success? How are we doing on those metrics? Oh, look at this. You know, here we have an area that's fragile. Let's make sure we address it through a goal-setting process.
And I think the administration might be the perfect vehicle for that because I know that my conversations with the administration have been, you know, our data shows us this and our data shows us that.
Right, that's my point. Absolutely.
And so maybe, as, as your cabinet meets, maybe, maybe they can reflect on, on what they see from their data.
Because I'd love to have that to look at.
There's a little rub because we won't have three eight. And three eight's a little because we do the opt-out. But we definitely would have, I think, you know, Mike had the IB come in today. Mike Inman had the IB come in today. We should have the AP by then. And we definitely have the region's exams.
I can say, well, here are my goals based on everything we talked about. But that doesn't allow me to, I mean, I haven't seen kind of data in a while. And so I, I just.
Well, just in defense, we go through all the data every, every single August. I mean, we go through.
Oh, absolutely. And I know that. But if we're goal-setting now, I'm just trying to figure out what data I'm reflecting on. Is it last August? Or are there other metrics that we've had since then? That can help us.
So do you think the, the administration might be comfortable tackling that as far as, you know, if, just looking reflectively at data and bringing to us their concerns as to what, I don't want to.
It's going to be, it's a fairly short window, but we can.
I'm not asking for a big dive. I don't think anybody's looking for a dive into that. But the reason I throw it out there is I think they probably intuitively already know.
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
But you want to support it with, but who loves data analysis more than Katie Gray's gentleman, right?
Haven't you already done that?
No, they like roll their eyes because I love it. I love it. I just, I could take it home at night and just, like, just play with it for the fun of it. So I'm all about that. So it's a real, it's a short timeframe.
I mean, I think there's a couple weaknesses that I think that we could probably address.
And we do, we have been collecting data every year and doing the analysis. We just, the only thing we'll be missing is three, three, three through eight. But that's got its flaws in it now anyway. So we can, we can do that. And I would think that send to Diana things you think about because I, my telepathy button doesn't always work. So, you know, as you think of things.
That's what I'm suggesting. I, I think that if anybody really has a, a passion about something that they would like to see, then we should give you a heads up so that you can chew on it, put forward.
And I can send it also out to everybody.
Well, and maybe that, I agree, like, just basically what Chris is saying, like, if we can get some thoughts ahead of time that we can reflect on, if we could get them thoughts ahead of time.
Yep.
Because they'll be implementing, you know, if, if there's things that we're, that we're envisioning and we may not.
So next Tuesday?
Mm-hmm. Is that reasonable?
And Friday would be even better because then I have the weekend to work on it. So.
Well, next Tu, we're saying next Tuesday. So you have.
Yeah, you have a weekend before the.
Yeah, right. But there's, I got to get it from these guys. So Friday would be, if you can get it to me by Friday.
So, well, let me, let me ask you guys this. Knowing that this, knowing that the goals meeting has been coming, do you already have some ideas of things in your mind? Because I know that.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, so is by Friday maybe?
By this Friday and today is Tuesday was what you're saying.
Yeah.
Is that reasonable?
Is that reasonable?
It's reasonable for me.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm a kid on the block. So I don't know if it's appropriate. I know that one of the things that you've all discussed in the past is in terms of communications. And I've definitely in the past raised the issue of, you know, different, there's different forms of communications. And the website looks great. And, but newsletters are one thing, but about a give and take. And when I think about the goals meeting, obviously, I mean, I ran on certain issues that I feel passionately about, as, as did Chris, as did everybody here. Have you ever considered asking the public to weigh in and just as a vehicle for them to share what they would like to see us focus on? I mean, it's not like that has to be the end-all, be-all. But I'd be curious to hear what the community has to say on that. I don't know if that's something you've ever considered.
Well, one of the goals last year was to, to, to weigh in with the community, to do different types of measurements with the community, you know, and get their, solicit their feedback.
Well, it seems like this would be a great. Just to ask, and even if it's just a few bullet points, I'd be curious. I mean, I've seen emails come from parents about issues that I hadn't considered. There were something that they feel were not as strong as we should be on. It's not something I'm focused on, but it's something they're focused on. So.
There are, there are different levels of goals.
Yeah.
And, and the, I think getting public feedback is great. The only challenge is that the public may not, one, have access to, you know, to look at the data, may not know the law.
I think it's a great idea. And, but it does open up a Pandora's box in the fact that if you ask people what would they like to see accomplished in the new school year, and, and there are a lot of extremely intelligent people with greater ideas than I might have. If we don't reply to each one, then they, people might be upset. So that's, that's how I don't, I, I know that people get frustrated when you voice an opinion or make a suggestion like the suggestion box, and then you never hear a reply.
Right.
So I would love to see it opened. And I understand it's the board goals, but sometimes somebody might have a really good idea out there that we didn't think of. But how do you process that and not hurt anyone's feelings if, if you have, we don't have enough time to.
Right.
Or it's, you know, I, I would like to see thirteen Board members instead of seven. You know, that one's. somebody might have a really good idea out there that we didn't think of, but how do you process that and not hurt anyone's feelings if you haven't? We don't have enough time to-
Right.
Or it's, you know, I would like to see 13 board members instead of seven. You know, that one's gotta go, you know, all-
Couldn't find 13 people who'd knock it down.
Right, but they, you know, in other words, that's not something that we can answer or act upon, so. But I would love to hear what's out there. I just don't know if we could do it by the-
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's an open meeting. Last couple of years, we had one person, you know. I remember one parent.
I hear what you're saying, like, if we try to throw out a survey monkey, then we might get a lot of responses that may not be feasible from people that may not be as involved. And so maybe if they're watching board meetings, or they're here, or they're following us in the paper, things like that, we can invite them to come to the meeting. If I'm gathering information-
We have a public meeting.
We have a public meeting. We posted as a public meeting with public input.
Oh, so you know, Donna West, why, and Bud had to come here, I mean-
Well, and it's a workshop too, right?
Well, yeah.
And certainly, if anybody has-
So the public can give input?
Absolutely. If anybody has ideas too, they can always email the superintendent and administrator or board member.
You know, historically, the public meeting was exactly for that purpose.
Right.
You know, we had public input, people wanted to give us their ideas, they can't-
Well, yeah, I mean, that's one of my goals in my suggestion box, that we don't limit the public input to, and there's a lot of schools have thought of this, you know, they listen to our open meeting and then we limit the length that we allow them to talk after they suffered through four hours of a meeting. But in other words, if I'm correct here, the goal-setting meetings on July 18th, and if we need a second evening, July 19th, are open to the public, and anyone that would like to attend these meetings, both beginning at 6:30, can come and contribute to any goals they would like to see potentially addressed by the district in the new school year. Is that a correct statement?
That's right, absolutely.
Okay.
Am I okay with that?
And so we need to have a structure where they can give input. So, you know, whether it's a podium at certain times, or they raise their hand during it, whatever that is, that format will need to be agreed to and articulated at the beginning of the meeting, so the public knows how they can kind of get into the conversation.
Does that help you?
Oh, I was just asking.
And you're allowed to, don't apologize for asking. Don't apologize for asking. Great.
So those of you who have had some thought into some meetings, or sorry, some goals for this next year, is it reasonable Friday to shoot me some ideas and I'll put a collective list?
Our date was Tuesday, but the news release was Friday.
No, well, if you can get them to, because I meet with my team, I-
Earlier next week, right?
Yeah, so that'd be great, because we were planning on getting together on Wednesday. This gives them, if I can get it back out to them on Friday, I just want to give them that time, so that, because, you know.
And have you guys been thinking about goals at all?
We've just-
Yeah? Should we go both directions? No?
Well, we're collecting, we're gonna chop, we're gonna, we're gonna kind of workshop it on Wednesday.
What are you doing?
Less goals.
Yeah.
Well, and I'd like to pare it down too.
Diana, I don't know if today is Tuesday, July 5th. So you're asking if it's possible for us to put to you in an email by close of business Friday helps anyone?
Yeah.
Which would be July 8th.
And everyone already has the goals from the last three years. We should have those PowerPoints.
I don't know, is that unrealistic?
I know, you're excited.
Your favorite thing.
I'll be expecting your goals set Friday.
Okay.
All right, thanks. Should we move on to the agenda items? Can I get a motion to approve appointment of officers 1 through 4?
So moved, second.
Now, do you write the first and second down, or do I?
I got it.
You got it?
Yes, I got it.
Ah, you're the best. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carry. Agenda items 5 through 12, can I get a motion to approve?
What happened to 13?
Thank you, 13.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carry. 14 through 17, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes. On items number 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, and 40, where we are accepting donations, I want to thank so much all these individuals and organizations for donating to our school district. Donations are always welcome. Please feel free to give us your stuff and your credit. And thank you so much to all of these groups, as groups and individuals, and these donations are fabulous for our district to help our children, so thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 62, again, motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Can I get a motion for 64 through 83?
Note that there are addendums to 73, 74, and 82.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carry. Items for discussion, amendments.
Send out all the, all the, all the committees, all the charters, and then have everybody decide which one they want. Either the three, half the three, which one's for board member?
Okay, so-
There's committees, but then there's also liaisons as well should be on here.
Yep.
So if both the liaison list and the committee list, some of the, I believe, would be policies for board, is it two years or just one? I'm trying to remember.
It's in your packet.
I believe it's two, so we have to look at who started on the committee last year and are they into their second year, or they finished with their second year and then you make a switch, so.
Say that again, two.
Some will stay in their seat and some will shift, so we just have to, you'll need to look at that and then they can let us know what's-
And that's outlined in the charters, so we send the charters out as well, or if anybody references the-
I'm respectfully requesting of the board president to expedite the policy committee charter so that we, because we have a lot of work to do this summer, so I'll be sending out recommendations for that.
Can I ask, when are the committees supposed to be in place as far as members, including parent volunteers, by September, or quicker? Because we did get off to a late start last year that I think we should try to avoid. And I know that we have had discussion about maybe revisiting some of those committees if they're not working, or changing some of them. So when do we have that discussion?
I would say after she sends out the things that are already in place and wants the charters on, so that might be finished.
In previous years, we had a workshop to talk about committees, so if there's a lot of discussion, we might- Last year, but we had previous ones.
I think they need to be more effective and efficient.
Let me send this, this is in your packet. This is in your packet, but just so you have that to reflect on, because I knew it would come up in the conversation.
And I'm sorry, what's this?
This is in your packet already, but it's just a, it's just a review of that and the committees that there are.
Okay.
They really should be expedited by the start of the school year, because now, you know, we're blessedly starting a school year with all our administrative, administrations intact, so it's a really good, strong way to start the school year. So they know what committees they have. We have the ad hoc committees in place, so it's a strong start, so we should be able to start them, you know.
Right, right away.
I agree with Teresa, it's been quite a while since we've had a workshop discussion on this, and I really think it's worth evaluating. Do we still have the committees we want to have? Are they structured properly? And there are a couple- I don't know, we admitted it took a long time. Like, we really have to tighten this up. I don't think that it was, I think some committees got a lot done, but I think we really need to have it be consistent and tightened up, so maybe we can get on the calendar a workshop. I don't know if we want to pull our calendars and look at it now, or- And we're already, you know, we're already in, you know, we're already in July, so we're gonna have to have a workshop in August if we're not setting the date until our next meeting. But it goes out via email.
I have an idea. What about the second night that we have set aside for goals meeting, we tackle this?
You know what, we may need the goal, we can't, because there have been years where we needed a second meeting for goals, so.
But if you don't, you could.
Right, but the things, I would think we would want to give enough time to let the public know that we're having a discussion about, a workshop about committees, because we can't decide on a, that Monday, well, guess what, we now have Tuesday, so we'll make it committee night. I would love that people to be able to show up and give us input on committees, particularly people who've served on committees, you know, the community, they could say, you know, this really didn't work, you know, respectfully, this didn't work, or did you try this? So I think we have to get a different night on the calendar, let everybody know about it, so that they can hopefully come.
I agree with you, but then I fear that an August date is, is-
Too late?
Well, inappropriate, because everybody's gone.
Then we do it in July. But this is, the summertime is when boards work on, set up their committees for the year. This is when that work's done. We don't have another board, maybe the last week in July, we do it?
I'm not here last week in July.
I, you know-
First week in August.
Well, I actually still think that that second night, we could tackle this. I think that that's enough lead time. I think that we've already got a night on the calendar set aside. I'm hoping that the goals will be quick and easy and that we can tackle this.
But are we inviting the public again, once again, are we inviting, do we ever invite the public prior to talk about?
It's a workshop, a workshop is a public forum.
Okay, last-
What, why are we workshopping the committees if we're just talking about assignments and whether they are still functional, whether we need to keep committees?
Then I don't think you do that in July and August. I don't think that works.
The goal is to actually have your committees up and running by October. It's almost, it's unrealistic to have them up in September.
If that's the case, we still can't wait till September to have the workshop.
I agree.
So, but just so you know, Board of Eds, this is when they have their discussions about workshops.
Chris, I am well aware of that, but you're limiting the amount of people in the community that can attend. If you're okay with that, and you want to have two dates on the calendar, or only one, and you just run with the people that are available on those limited dates, then okay.
Here's the struggle. If we wait till September, I would love for everyone who wants to come to be available to come, but if we wait until everyone is back and the summer rentals are over, then we're looking at having a workshop in September, which means that we're not going to be able to have our committees up and running for a while. Because after the workshop, then you make the decisions, then you have to give, then you have to give notice to the community, invite them to participate, and we're pushing it back. And I think that, you know, again, I would hate to push it back too late in the year because then there's not enough meetings to get stuff done.
You can try one in July, and if you don't have enough attendance, then you're gonna have to decide whether you're gonna throw another date out to gather more attendance.
May I make a suggestion that might be a good compromise? You know, you have a specific group of people, it's a target audience that you're trying to reach, it's people who've served on these committees.
Correct.
No.
Not at all.
We want the public to come in, because you're gonna have different people serving in the coming year a lot of times. A workshop is for the public to help participate in discussion of that topic. That's what a workshop is.
Then you can't do it with short notice on July 5th and say, on July 19th is the one and only open to the public workshop.
I agree, so we do it in August. So we do it in August.
We agree.
I agree with you. So it's in, we've done workshops in the summer before, then we do it in August. But we've got decisions to make about our committees. Mary, consider everybody.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
It won't be the two nights that we've board meeting, so we'll pick a different night for the workshop.
Did you want to?
So the annual policy review, I think that was me, was I, right, was that?
The policy committee?
Yeah, I just had to get the policy up and running, and I have to expedite that because we have a lot of work to do, and I have a really great group that is willing to do the heavy lifting during the summer. And I skipped over Larry, you have to be more assertive.
Skipped over him what?
Mike, because he was supposed to go right after Mike.
Are we presenting?
And that public input one somehow got skipped over as well.
No, we don't have, there's no public input one.
Yeah?
And Larry was supposed to go right after Mike, and I'm just heartfully sorry.
Where's the part that you get to discuss something you want to discuss?
Coming up.
Even made the board member, even made the board member have to wait for public input to, okay.
No, I'm-
Was items, am I under items?
It's now, we need now, it's now.
I thought I was under items for the, would you like Larry to go first?
Yeah, we'd like to.
No, he's, he's, it's-
He's not going anywhere.
He's afraid to go now.
I have 19 carpets to show you.
I was not here on June 20th, I missed the meeting on Monday, June 20th, and I was unable to vote for the tenure recommendations, so I just wanted to say congratulations to Kaitlin, Kim, and Britton. Thank you. All right, carpet time.
Is it carpet time?
I'm so sorry, Larry. I have to put everything on that PowerPoint. Mike was gonna remind me. We have public input.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to, I think we're going to have to put them up right, because they are going to have trouble.
But we can all stand.
Some of us are vertically challenged.
Kids want to get up and walk around them?
I'm sorry, on that Monday, I missed, we picked red, right?
Yes. Red upholstery and a red carpet, so we talked about having a carpet that, red upholstery and red curtains. We talked about having a carpet that had some black in it, so that it wasn't a sea of red.
Teresa, did you have thoughts one way or the other? Come on, Teresa.
I'm a little overwhelmed.
Should we do process of elimination? Are there any you hate? Which ones do you hate? Can you help put them over?
Not your boat?
Those two.
This one down?
Yeah. That one. I know.
They have the two platters over there.
Any others?
And they have shown us the parents.
Larry, one of the things that we had requested at the last meeting, I don't know if you have more.
Are we mixing what you loved?
I like that one over there. The one that's on this plate.
Larry, last time you were here, there was a specific request, so I didn't know if there were any more samples. I'm not looking for another round. I'm simply asking. We had, there was a request to bring some that had kind of.
Oh, don't tell me there's more over there?
We got a whole book.
Well, I did ask Ray then Allen.
I asked for something that is not here, so I'm just going to abstain. Many, so I will abstain. Many. I don't think that's horrible. What is, that one is not horrible. I'm not a big, I'm not a big fan of a lot of, I'm not a big fan of a lot of gray in the carpet personally.
Sandy, you want to put any on the short list?
That one too.
Did you pick one already?
No, this one close right here. Yep, yeah.
Can you, the one that's facing in the back of that chair, can you put on the, no, the one to your right? Can we see that on the floor to see what it looks like on the floor? I appreciate it. Thank you.
Susan, can you pick a carpet for God's sake?
I mean, it's not bad, and my concern is it's very dark.
Something like that?
Is that out? I'm sorry, somebody with some decorating talent say something. Who's got some decorating talent? I live in the Bureau White House, this is how I want to talk.
Doesn't matter. We're making a decision tonight. Honestly, I.
I think she wanted something more casual, none of these are.
It wasn't that. It doesn't ma, I know a decision needs to be made, right? So you guys, you guys decide. I will support whatever my colleagues want. Which was the original? You want, you don't want this color scheme at all?
We're not going back.
So, since we're beyond that and we're committed to the school colors, of the school colors, what do you like?
Whenever, whenever you guys want?
I'm sorry, the more we get ridiculous and silly, if somebody made a comment, a solid carpet does white. Shows the dirt.
No, I was just thinking, when it's very, very dark, that, very dark carpets show more dirt.
Kate, we originally had a carpet that was neutral in color and much lighter, which we were told would not show dirt as much, but I think the majority of board wanted, did not want that.
Modern, and it might show luster. It's like a step away from.
And can you go like this, or is this horrible?
That's not personally my tan.
It's not mine either.
I think too much gray on the floor is going to look horrible, personally.
Because you would like the tan at the end.
Just a lot of gray. Anyway, a lot of these have the same, you know, when your TV, in the old days, when the programming was stopped and you'd get lines across your TV, a lot of these have that pattern. So there just isn't a lot of assortment of patterns.
That one has a little bit of tan in it.
You know, maybe it's the one in the chair that has some.
I think that one, because it has a little bit of tan at first.
That is horrible.
Yeah. Maybe we should put those three with a little bit of tan.
Do you want me to move, watch this screen?
Stephanie, you got to come back to the table, Stephanie.
Well, we're talking about whether black is dirty, if it really is dirty or.
That one's gone.
I'm sorry, Teresa, what'd you say? This one right here?
That one, yeah.
So, let's get along. Okay, are we narrowing, have I narrowed them down a little yet, or no? No, I haven't. Let's.
Can I make a suggestion so we can get to some consensus? Maybe everyone can pick number one and two, and if there's a common theme, we can at least put those aside and say, okay, we've narrowed it down, because I don't feel.
Can I let the administrators go home?
Yep. I think that's a great idea.
That's a good idea. Thank you all.
Not that this is riveting for them, but.
Thank you.
You have fun weighing in on carpet?
Did I mention that we got to do those goals next week, so start thinking about that? Yeah, that date's been long.
Oh, actually, this makes a little more sense. Don't you think, guys? People go like this and drop the.
Put the carpet on the ground.
I think we should have one right up front.
Good night, thanks, ma'am. Good morning.
You want to look through the red? Blue, it's not black.
I like the one by Diana.
Well, here's the thing, because it's got so much tan in it that I.
Well, the walls, keep in mind, I don't know if you've seen the board, the walls are beige, and there's a lot of wood on the walls. So that's his design and the carpet choices. We're trying to tie that into the design. But I wouldn't do too, I wouldn't do too much gray.
I like that little one. Yeah, that's classy.
The little small one, yeah, that one.
Like that, you take this away. And put this, so that you're not looking at the carpet, boring.
Yeah, I like that.
These are the walls. I'm sorry, I don't know what that is. That's the wall main. Anybody, does anybody think?
We're not voting. There's not a vote. There's no, there's no vote. If there's, if there's a real vote on the books, then, if there's a vote, I will, I will vote.
Are we settled? Is that it?
I think that's it.
I'm okay with that.
All right, everybody content with that? Steph, you good with that?
Could you please come here, Mr. Decorate, because you know more. Just look at it. Please.
Stephanie, Stephanie.
Oh, you can't. You can't solicit public input. Okay, I think it's terrific.
You guys okay with that one?
Yes.
You okay with that one?
Okay.
All right, all right. Correspondence is on the agenda?
Thanks, Larry.
Thanks, Larry.
Yes, I'd like to report the course on, I can name names.
Do you want to wait, do you want to wait till the fucking clock falls?
Yeah, yeah, let's wait.
We'll hold off some correspondence. We'll do it before the, for the August meeting.
And then we can just, you can report on correspondence for the previous month or something, and Michael can consult with us after this.
All right. Any other items for discussion before I move on to public input two?
No.
Public input two, does anybody from the public come on up? Uh, right here. I have something I get to read to you.
I think I know what it is.
Public input two is reserved for comments related to agenda and non-agenda items and does not require sign-ups. The period for public input two is unrestricted to accommodate, as many communities. Did I read the whole thing?
Yes.
Yes, you do.
Members of the public should address their comments to the board, and comments should be no longer than five minutes long. The board prohibits public discussion regarding concerns about individual district personnel or students. Persons wishing to discuss these matters should present their comments or concerns to the appropriate administrator. Board of Ed appreciates the input of the community. However, if a member of the community fails to conduct themselves appropriately or violates the rules set forth therein, the board has a right to suspend the community member's privilege of speaking during the public input Board of Ed meeting. With approval of the President, board members and the superintendent shall have the privilege of asking and answering questions of any person who addresses the board. Thank you for attending.
Thank you for having me.
I'm Diane Hewitt. I wanted to talk about the music enrichment. It's been a topic on, of mine for a while, a topic of interest of mine for a while, and it's been recently online. I've seen a lot of discussion on it. So many music and art students are seeking outside enrichment to expand their potential and exposure, potential exposure and abilities, and many other schools offer after-school clubs and opportunities in music arts and theater. I am curious what's happening with the position to replace Mr. Reynolds, and if there may be any opportunity for enriching especially music experiences or after-school opportunities or something. And if not, can Pearson look into shared options that may be negotiated with other neighboring districts? This type of approach has helped provide high-quality, provide more offerings for student athletes that would not necessarily have the option at Pearson. So I thought this could be also offered in terms of music offerings and extracurriculars to benefit the children. There are things like jazz ensemble, chamber orchestra, chamber choir, summer music program, music in the parks, honor band, honor orchestra, music awards night, things like that. So I guess, first of all, the, can you discuss if there's been a hire yet?
We're in the process. It's been posted, and we've received the application, and we're looking specifically for someone with this. Our building's middle school, high school principal is meeting with that person directly, because we try not to engage if it's misconstrued. So he's meeting with them directly.
So would there be like a music administrator, sort of, someone that would oversee all the music? The entire music department here at both schools?
There is a stipend that goes along with, and that's what Eric Reynolds had. I don't know who will be stepping up to. But he really, I have every faith that he'll, he'll look at the leadership.
Correct, correct, and we've done that in the past, we've had two separate nights.
Oh, that's not public?
Yeah, and sometimes, we're having a retreat this year, so a lot of times it will come out of a retreat if you do a retreat.
Okay, and then, when you set your long-range financial planning, is that, would that automatically be in your district goals?
That's business as usual.
Okay.
We did have a specific goal to create a four-year fiscal plan, and we did that, it's done, that's done.
So updating that on a rolling basis will be operation in nature.
Okay, and then my last question is, when you have your meeting, and you're, you're talking about your, the committees, you're gonna include shared decision-making teams in that committee, in that process, too?
Yeah, I mean, that's prescribed by state law, so.
Right, but I don't think we did them this year, this past year.
They were, they were, they were shared decision-making committees this year, they were, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't discuss in a workshop, do we have them or not, because it's prescribed by law that we're required to have them, there might be a discussion of, are there ways in which we can enhance how they operate to be even more effective, that might be in the context of a workshop, but not whether we do them or not, since it's required by law.
Right, okay, so then you, but when you're setting up your committees, you know you're gonna have to do a shared decision-making committee for, how did you set it up, it was, it was elementary, middle, and then high school, and then a district-wide committee?
Yeah, the district is not required, but the other ones are required.
Okay, all right, and then, would that be something, you'd want to get that up and running by the fall as well, so people, that, those teams would have a full year to set their goal, and do their research, and make their recommendation, okay, all right, good, just wanna make sure I'm clear on it all, thank you.
Anybody else? I'm Larry Balt, hello, everyone, I'd like to start by saying thank you to each and every one of you for being here tonight, and being here, what I think is somewhere around sixty-five nights a year, it's an incredible amount of time, I'm a guy who's really interested in all this, and I, I can't imagine, you know, how much you guys are all putting into this, so, thanks to all of you, congratulations to our new board member, congratulations to our new officers, and really do appreciate all that you do, because I know it's a lot, and as a guy who's just recently become very interested in all of this, the levels of knowledge that you need of the rules and regulations and policies are very difficult to comprehend, so forgive me if I say anything that's weird, I'm just kinda going by comments and stuff. I liked a lot of what you guys had to talk about tonight, and it seemed to me, as a guy who's only sees a lot of the stuff via video, because I'm very busy, that there, there seems to be a lot of energy in the room tonight, maybe that's my imagination, but maybe it's just the summertime, and everybody's up, and I don't know, but it seems good to me, and I, and I like that a lot. Allison's question answered some of mine, I, I was confused about the difference between board goals and district goals, so that, that was clarified, so I don't have to ask you that. I do think public input is super important, you know, anything that's run by committee is inherently gonna be laggy, time-wise, I mean, you know, by, there's so much that you guys have to process and, 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 and cut down, even just like the rugs is a perfect example, you know, you've got twenty-five samples to look at, and you're trying to narrow them down to two in a very short period of time, and it's something, it's, it's hard to do, it takes time. So I would encourage you as a board to, you know, offer as much opportunity for the public to have input as possible, I think one thing that, personally, I think, one thing that makes it very difficult for the public is that, you know, right now, I had a night where Chris and I could sit here, and we could listen and, and stay for the stuff that's not really, things that we needed to be here for, rug samples, we're gonna leave that to you guys. So if we could somehow get a place where public input moves forward, so that the people who want to speak can come in and can say what they would like to say, and then get out, I think you'd probably see a lot more people show up, because despite the fact that you guys have made this giant commitment, there's an awful lot of people that just can't or won't, so I think that would be great. As far as the committees go, I think we have some really good committees, I'd love to see the committees, I think Chris said it well, you said to enhance the committee's effectiveness, I think we have good committees, but I'm not sure that they're being utilized to their full potential, and I'd also like to see the bylaws that govern the committees paid a little more attention to. Without, without pointing out specifics, you know, I know that there were, there have been issues, but it's on both sides, I think, there, there are, you know, there's, there's byline, bylaws in the, in the, in the committees that state how many times you need to be there, and whether, if you don't show up for, you know, if you don't make more than four meetings, then you're no longer a member, where, I, I know from firsthand experience, I wasn't on one, but, but Chris was, where, you know, the committee met fifteen times, but only the same five people sort of over time, and then it just went on that way, and it really becomes very ineffective, but I think it's a good tool, and I just think it's something that, that, that could be improved upon, and then I'll leave it to your wisdom to figure out ways to do that, and if I can make more meetings, if I can think of anything helpful, I'll, I'll chip in. And the only other question I had was just, and I guess you guys are gonna address this later on, this was quite, quite a long agenda, I was curious just on some of the, I, I guess there's a place for me to look probably, maybe you're just pointing in that direction, like, on the personal actions, where we're talking about pay rates and so forth, is there a way to compare them, since there's no statement on the agenda about whether they've increased, decreased, et cetera, is there a way to find out, just, I'm just curious whether we're going up, down, or staying pretty much the same on most of the stuff, and that, you know, personnel actions, there's a whole bunch of things here, I was just curious, it's not, you know, it's not super critical.
On most of our personnel actions throughout the year, we always show the increase, we always, we always show that.
I'm assuming there's some increase for cost of living, et cetera.
Yeah, and so, I'm just not sure we're in which ones we were talking about, because throughout the year, you're gonna see, you're, you're gonna see.
Yeah, I mean, don't, don't take a lot of time looking at that now, it's not that important, it really is, it's minutia, but yeah, that, that's pretty much what I wanted to say, thanks, and I wish you all the best this year, and, and having a successful and, and positive and productive term, and that's it.
Bees and boy, A L T Z. Sorry, I didn't lean into the mic, I figured I was loud. Good evening, Eric touched on it a little bit about Jeff Peters, about the field in the back, it was overseeded and aerated, but nothing was mentioned about drainage, the sprinkler system, has that all been, is it new, has it been new drainage put in, because all that should have been done first, before they went and overseeded, they did the cart before the horse, it doesn't make sense to me. It's just a temporary. Yeah, but how can, how can grass grow without water, I mean, it's a waste of time and money, this is the worst time of the year for it. I know, but, I mean, it's, the poor guy's wasting his time and money, I mean, we could have waited and had it done.
Can we ask, I don't, maybe we can just, I don't know the answer, Jeff, is there water out there, is there?
Yes, there's an irrigation system, there is, there is some. No, 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 it just, to me, it doesn't make sense, it's like having, building a house and having half, have half air conditioning, and the other half, no, it just doesn't make sense to me why you're gonna do it, consider, in pure English, plain English, half-assed, I mean, if you're gonna do it, do it right the first time.
Anybody else for public input two? Make motion to. To speak with our attorney to discuss real estate.
So moved?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.